Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator. John Inglisino Esquire, Township Attorney. Yancy Wemiris, Township Clerk.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meeting law by filling the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. The legal notice appear in both the deli record on December 14, 2012, and in the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012. It was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 10, 2012. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and air on cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday and are also available by viewing at www.parcipani.net.
Just like to start out by saying Happy New Year to everybody and welcome our dignitaries, Senator Joseph Panaccio. We have freeholders: Ann Grassi, John Cicero, Thomas Messerangelo, Hank Lyons. And from Morristown, we have Councilwoman Allison Deep. Thanks for coming. Upcoming meetings: January 3, 2013, Immediately Followed New Organization Meeting, Agenda Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. 1:15, 2013, 7:30 p.m., Regular Meeting, Public Invited, Public Participation. Okay, now to the appointments. Craftman Farms Foundation, Expiration 1231, 2013. Mr. De Piero, would you take that?
Be happy to.
Economic Development Advisory Committee, Expiration 1231, 2013. Mr. Farrar, would you take that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, as for the members, we're going to be making a few changes. They will be filled in April 2013. The Emergency Services Council, 1231, 2013, expiration, I will be taking that. Environmental Advisory Committee expires 1231, 2013. Mr. Farrar, would you take that?
Yes, thank you.
Fire Prevention Bureau expires 1231, 2013. I will be taking that. Historic Preservation Advisory Committee expires 1231, 2013. Mr. Nelson, will you take that?
Be my pleasure.
Okay, at this time, I'll take a nomination for two members for the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Pat Palelo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. De Piero, second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Barbara Seaman.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. De Piero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
The Library Board of Trustees, Expiration 1231, 2013. Mr. Karifi, would you take that?
Yes.
Morris County League of Municipalities, Expiration 1231, 2013. Mr. Nelson, would you take that?
Yes.
Municipal Government Transparency Committee, 1231, 2013. Mr. Nelson, will you take that?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'll take nominations for members for Municipal Government Transparency Committee.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to nominate three people.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate David Kramer, Gene Scheffel. Right. Right, I want to get a nominee. I'm going to change that, Mr. Council President. I'd like to nominate Anita Pesovich, Thomas Roman, and Tom Waika.
All right, we're going to do them individually, so start off each one.
Okay. How about Anita Pesovich?
Motion to nominate Anita Pesovich.
I'll second his motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. De Piero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Council President, I'd also like to nominate Mr. Thomas Roman.
Second.
Motion to nominate by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Council President, I'd also like to nominate Mr. Victor Giassino.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, okay, we're going to hold off on the other two nominations till next meeting. Okay. Open space, we don't have it. That's not up. Precipani Area Chamber of Commerce. Yep, Mr. Farrar, will you take that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Precipani Child Daycare Center, Expiration 1231, 2013. Mr. Nelson, will you take that?
Be my pleasure, Council President.
Okay. Planning Board, Class 3 member, expires 1231, 2013. Mr. De Piero, will you take that?
I think that needs to be voted on.
Okay, that needs to be voted on?
I'd like to nominate...
I would, I would think so. It's a Class 3 member of the Planning Board.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, I'd like to nominate Mr. De Piero.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Epstein.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Police Athletic League expires 1231, 2013. Nominate myself. Recreation Advisory Committee, Mr. Karifi, expires 1231, 2014. Would you take that?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a nomination. We have one opening for a member for Recreation Advisory Committee.
Nominate Frank Neglia.
Second.
Nomination by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. De Piero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Traffic Advisory Committee expires 1231, 2013. Mr. Karifi, would you take that?
Yes.
Okay, we have an opening for two for the Traffic Advisory Committee. Any nominations?
Nominate Nick Servo.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. De Piero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Entertain a motion for a second, member?
Nominate George Terry.
Motion by Mr. Karifi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, Zone and Board of Adjustments, we have two four-year term regular members and two alternate two-year terms. Entertain motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Bernie Berkowitz as a four-year term.
Second that.
Motion by Mr. De Piero, second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Loretta Graniani for the other four-year term.
Second.
Motion by Mr. De Piero, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to, as alternate number one, recommend Steve Capadonna.
Motion by Mr. De Piero.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
And as alternate number two, I'd like to recommend Amal Shah.
Second.
Motion by Mr. De Piero, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Consent Agenda, be resolved. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member so requests, which case the item be removed from Consent Agenda, considered a normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. De Piero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Open to the public right now? You'll be given five minutes to speak? Seeing no one come forward, okay. Yes. So you know this is based on just what we're going over right here with the reorganization, not the regular meeting, the agenda meeting itself?
My, my issue is nothing to do with the agenda. I don't, is this the time to speak or another time?
It'll be the agenda meeting, which is right after this.
After, okay.
All right, thank you. Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Farrar. Right now, take the ultimate, ultimate motion?
I'll make a motion to close this meeting?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
All right, we'll be taking it to may break in between meetings.
We'll do everything else. Yeah. Okay. Yancy, good one.
Township Precipani Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, January 3, 2013, public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order by myself at 10 to 8. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. De Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Farrar.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino Esquire, Township Attorney, Yancy Wemiris, Township Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council meeting, January 15, 2013. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meeting law by filling the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. The legal notice appear in both the deli record on December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012. It was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 10, 2012. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and air on cable Public Access Channel 21 at 1:00 p.m. on Saturday and are also available for viewing at www.parcipani.net.
Okay, Presentations, Inner Park Rehabilitation Project.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor Barbario and members of the council. My name's Joseph O'Neil of Garafalo in O'Neill, and I'm here on behalf of Commercial Land Development Incorporated regarding the Inner Park development. The Inner Park development, as many of you may or may not know, is a series of office buildings behind where the Bennigans used to be. It was, at one time, a rusting building sitting along the highway and has now been changed into this proposed office building with granite and glass, a great improvement. But however, I am sad to report this evening that this is still a failed development. They are unable to lease this office because of its location, not because of its proximity to the highway, of course, but more in keeping with the problems of access to the site. This is an overlay of a proposal we have, but you can see here the office building, Route 46, and the office building here in the rear. This is a very challenging intersection up at Vale Road, providing very limited access. Of course, the building isn't visible from 46 that much, and the access is very discreet in the area here. This is, of course, now the Blackthorn Restaurant. And what we are here this evening for, ladies and gentlemen, is to ask the council to refer this matter to the planning board, and we're asking you for a designation as this area being in need of rehabilitation. Or in the alternative, asking the planning board to examine whether or not a zone change would be warranted to allow for this to change from a commercial development into a residential development. Now, along those lines, I have with me this evening from my client, Mr. James Jones, who will go into some of the details about what it is we are proposing. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Jones, you've, you've prepared a report for commercial land development regarding this, haven't you?
I have, yes.
I wonder if you could just give the council a history?
Sure. A quick history of the site. The site was initially laid out in 1984. Construction began around 1987, and it was stopped indefinitely around 1991. At that time, the building was a steel skeleton. You probably remember seeing it along Route 80, and it stayed in that condition for, well, until 2007. At that point, Commercial Realty Group, the entity that Joe referred to, Commercial Land Development, purchased it, and their intention was to complete it as an office building. They enclosed the rusting steel skeleton with glass and steel. That was that picture you first saw. And since that time, 2008, they hired Cushman and Wakefield, a team of brokers, to lease it. Cushman and Wakefield has worked on that for approximately four years with no leasing that's occurred in the building. And today, the project is generally considered to be a failure in the marketplace. We are told by the brokers that it will not lease commercially in the foreseeable future.
Now, regarding the proposal...
Sorry.
Regarding the proposal
that we're seeking before the planning board, which is not here before you this evening, but of course, we would ask it to be referred to the planning board, what are we asking the planning board to consider?
We're asking the planning board to consider a change of use in the property or considering designating the property an area in need of rehabilitation for conversion to multifamily residential.
And in connection with that, of course, the multifamily residential has less of a parking requirement, so where there are existing parking lots now, you're proposing replacing those with pools, correct?
That's correct. Currently, this is all paved, and this is an abandoned foundation in the ground right now. This is Building 200, but if it were completed as office, which it won't be since the first building can't be successfully an office building. But if it were, right hypothetically, this would all be paved. The residential's a much less intense use, requires far less parking, so it would allow the developer to have much larger green areas and also recreational amenities such as pools.
What would this mean financially regarding ratables for the town?
Ratables for the town, and I think, Joe, we distributed to the council? Okay, we submitted, but I'll just very quickly go through basically three numbers. So right now, the property vacant generates $183,963 a year of tax revenue. And obviously, it's an unsustainable position.
Say that number again.
$183,963. And that, do you want the breakdown too, because there's three parcels involved there?
Sure.
Okay. So that's 87, well, I'm just going to give round numbers. I'm not going to go through the exact. That's about $87,000 in the vacant building, about $74,000 in the vacant land site, which is 200 in a park. And then the last component of it is this piece out here, which is about $21,000.
Just a quick question, that's the Servo Lumberyard that you were pointing at?
It's the lumberyard property, correct. So today, again, in aggregate, it generates about $184,000 of tax revenue, but as it's vacant, it's not a sustainable solution. If it were to be redeveloped using today's values of about $285,000 per residential unit, it would generate tax revenues of approximately $1.325 million, which is an increase of about 621% over its current state. And I think that's the bulk of the picture. There's a lot more in this presentation, which I can go into if you like, but Joe, I think those are the most important numbers.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many units are you talking about?
287, I believe. Yes.
Can you describe that for them, please?
Yes.
And one more question, you could answer all at the same time. How big of a parcel of land are you talking about?
The, again, it's off the top of my head, so it's rough numbers. It is in the report. It's about three acres at the 100 in a park building. It's about just shy of four at the 200 in a park. So in aggregate, I'd say just shy of seven, but again, that's off the top of my head.
Seven acres in total.
In total. Correct.
And you're looking for 285 units, you said?
287.
287.
The 287, would that be where the current existing building is and also where that foundation is?
Correct.
Does that include anything out by the lumberyard now or no? Or just these two locations?
Yes, in the report, it called for an additional 20 units where the lumberyard is.
And that's part of the 287?
It's important to point out that any development at the lumberyard right now is not proposed at this time, but we are including it as part of the rezoning as a future development. And that would be a commercial mixed-use development that would allow for both a commercial use there and a residential use in connection with the park. So there would be an interaction between the residential uses here and the commercial and residential uses here to engage the park as like a town center.
You said these were going to be rental units?
No, we, we haven't determined the proposal yet, whether they're going to be condos or rentals. What we're proposing are studios and one bedrooms only. The studios are in yellow, the one bedrooms are in green here in this exhibit. It's mostly studios targeted at younger professionals. It'd either be condos or apartments, that hasn't been determined.
Well, I, I can't, I can't make a decision then because I have strong feelings against rental units. We have 7,000 in Precipani already. I don't want rental units in Precipani anymore. If they're condos, I would look favorably. If they're rentals, I'm not. If you can't make a decision, I can't make a decision.
Well, what we're asking for this evening is we're asking for a referral to the planning board to work these, to work these out. And certainly, the planning, we would do a full presentation at the planning board with the architects, and there'd be a lot more analysis. We're giving you a very broad brush approach to this, this evening.
Yeah, but once we make a proposal to the planning board, we're out of, the council is out of the picture.
Well, the planning board would be, no, that's not true. The planning board would be...
I think what's being, I think what is being proposed is a, is the beginning of a rezone for the project. So I think the purpose of tonight's meeting is really just to give you a very broad presentation of the project in the broader sense.
Okay.
And then it would have to go, at that point, it could go to the planning board or you could just introduce an ordinance, which gets it to the planning board, and then it gets their, you know, recommendation, and it comes back to you for a, for a final vote up or down.
This is only the beginning of a process where the planning board will do some fact finding for the council, but the ultimate determination is the council's, not the planning board's. They'll only make a recommendation to you, and then the council would make the final determination as to what they want to say.
I had a chance to read your report, but one question here, in Figure 16 about the projected tax revenues, are you basing that, the projected tax revenues as these units being condos or as being rentals? Where is that number coming from?
It would be roughly the same either way. This, this report doesn't make a determination between the two because the value of the property per unit, right, as a rental versus the value of a property per unit condo?
Well, it would be, I would think it would be a substantial difference in, in tax revenue for the, for the township.
That, no, I don't know that that would be the case. I don't necessarily understand why.
Well, it's my understanding that, that apartments are taxed differently than, than...
Rental properties.
Then rental properties are completely taxed different.
In any case, you'd have to have a...
They are taxed differently, but the valuation issue is, brings you around to the same, same number.
It really doesn't. It really doesn't. We don't get our fair share of taxes from apartments. We never have. They're not even, they're not even close. And if I do my calculations right, it's 287 units, seven acres. That comes to about 40 units per acre.
Correct.
We don't have anything, and since we've had a master plan, we don't have anything in Precipani anywhere near that density.
I agree with Councilman De Piero.
But as we pointed out, this is, these are just very broad strokes for what an ultimate plan would be, and that could certainly be worked out at the planning board. And then ultimately, they would make their recommendation to the council. All we're asking for this evening is an opportunity to proceed with the concept and have the planning board consider the details.
On these seven acres, how many parking spaces are you having?
I don't know off the top of my head, but let's say for a moment that you had one and a half spaces per unit, which would be typical, right? So then...
So that's 350?
Correct.
And just a question, hypothetical. You have seven acres, you've got 440 parking spaces, how many acres is that? So you're really building 287 units on how many acres of land?
Just...
It comes more than 42. I'm saying, you said seven acres, but in this seven acres, you've got to build 440 parking spaces.
There would be a reduction in parking over what's there now. Right now, you have five per thousand for the office space. So totally, at Inter Park, you can build out one hundred and twenty-five in the second building. So let's call it two hundred thousand feet, just in round numbers. And you've got to provide five spaces for each thousand feet.
You're only talking about the building that's there now, not the restaurant parking, right?
Right, that doesn't include the restaurant parking.
That's correct.
It's going to be a reduction in parking. We've had, I mean, the architect that drew this conceptual plan has considered all that. And he was able to show that all this, which is currently paved, would become green.
The existing structure is what, five or six stories?
Four in building one and five in the approved 200 building.
Four and five. And those are the only two structures? There are going to be more?
At Inter Park, those would be the only two structures. So if I go back here for a moment, you've got the existing Blackthorn. Forget that for a moment. We're really talking about these two buildings.
Mr. Jones, I drove over there the other day to take a look at it. And I would agree that as far as two office buildings, it was a miserably failed project. And I can't imagine that these would be rented in, honestly, in my lifetime. I see where you're coming from and in theory, I like the idea and that we should be discussing it. There are a few problems that I do have or major concerns. One of them is the road that you have there that cuts through Veterans Park.
Well, that was put in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you could discuss that a little bit.
That was put in at an earlier stage of a conceptual design. And it's really, we're only showing it here because it was presented before to the towns' professionals. We didn't want to back away from anything. But the fact of the matter is, this would probably be very problematic coming along the waterway here. It's really not critical to the development back here and it also wouldn't be critical to development here either. It was part of a commitment to improve Vail Road and Highway 46 to allow for turns, which is why we showed it right here. But it just might not be possible, frankly. This is just a concept plan. The particulars of it would need to be worked out. The current wetlands buffers probably aren't going to permit something like this, frankly, the way they've changed the law. That would leave Vail Road and 46 still unimproved. Well, it works fine for the park as it is now and it certainly wouldn't affect the uses as residential uses. Because residential uses, you don't need that type of access that you get with the commercial uses. It was originally proposed as part of a commercial development. One of the reasons you can't rent these out as a commercial development is you can't really make a left turn without driving all the way down to Baldwin Road, turning back around. So it's a very difficult access. That's a negative for commercial, but that's a positive for residential because you don't want a lot of traffic coming through. You don't want any kind of throughways. So the isolation now becomes a positive, makes it very desirable for the residential use. So this, frankly, would probably end up going, the footbridge connecting the park to that, though, that's still something that could happen. And this development, I mean, this is completely speculative. There's really no particular plan on the drawing board. Cerbo Lumber's, of course, been there a long time and enjoying a very good business. And that would not be disturbed, but we wanted to include that as part of an overall concept for use as a commercial area. But that, that really wouldn't be that critical from the Littleton Road cut through to Vail Road. That whole thing could be lost. Again, this is something that would need to be worked out at the planning board to allow some give and take, to allow the experts to take a look at it, whether or not they really want to desire that, as I said. I personally don't think you could build that under the current law.
My breath is not working out right. How many units can you fit on a floor? Six units on a floor?
These are smaller units, which is, these are smaller units, which is what's causing the density. These are all studio apartment designs. Well, the second building's of a different dimension. We're just showing you what's there now, the existing building. Mr. Jones, how many would be in that existing building?
It's going to be about twenty-six per floor.
How many floors?
Four floors in the existing building. And on the ground floor, there aren't as many because you've got a lot more common areas. So let me just put that up so you can see it.
The atrium that's there now will continue to stay there all the way up.
Sorry. Whoops. There you go. You can see that on the entry level, you've got a lot more common areas. So it cuts out units on the first floor. And there's been an attempt by this architect who did the layout to, A, utilize the narrow, the lack of depth of this building. A lot of office buildings are very deep. A lot of office buildings, you couldn't do this to. You simply wouldn't get window line. But this building's very shallow, so you can do it. And second, the architect is trying to make sure that these are very high-end units for young professionals. We're trying to fit as few people per unit as possible. We're looking for young professionals to come in and do a studio, one person in one unit.
You're talking about the four-four being twenty-six per floor, which is your hundred and four. But that leaves a hundred and eighty-three left over for your five-story one?
There's about twenty at what would have been the, which we included because it's in the concept plan where the lumberyard is right now. And then the balance would be, and that's not even built or designed, so that's-
You're still at minimum thirty per floor on your five-story.
We're trying to give you a high end, yes.
So the five-story building is considerably larger than the four-story building. It's also got, it's the same depth, but it is a longer building as well, so it has more square footage and larger floor plates.
You're, you're, sorry, no, go. You're proposing five floors for the other building, the second building?
That's the approved office building now.
Does it meet the height requirements?
It's already got-
Okay, that's what I was asking you. Is it the new one or the one that's there?
It'd be the new one. There's a concrete pad back there now.
Okay.
The parking lot's in, the pad's in, I believe.
If I may say, you know, I agree that right now, what's there is just not working. But I also agree with Mr. DePiero as far as rentals. I mean, we have so many rental units in our town as it is. Has there been any study done to see what, you know, I know you're saying young professionals. You know, what are the chances are, one, we'd fill all these? And two, has there, you know, has there been a study of that, one? And two, if so, has there been a study of rentals versus these people buying these? Because me personally, I think we have too many rental units. I'd like to see if, what the market would be for these people to actually purchase these units and have them own them rather than more rentals. Because I just think that's a better way to go, in my opinion.
Well, we do have some information on that and they have, I mean, this, what we're proposing here is a, is going to be a successful project. It's not going to be another failed project in a long line of failed projects.
Even if it were where they would own them versus renting?
That's our, that's our information. Isn't that true, Mr. Jones?
In Morris County today, there's considerable demand for multifamily housing, both rental and for sale. And it is, it's here in this market. The multifamily vacancy here, when I last checked, which was, going to go back a few months now, probably about October, but at that time, it was only about four percent.
Okay.
Which is an incredibly tight market. So yes, there's demand for multifamily housing here.
Ownership versus rental.
Ownership and rental. It doesn't matter.
It matters to us.
Understood, but-
And the tax intake is going to be considerably different based on rental.
Yeah, correct, but from a market perspective, there's demand for both.
Obviously, I mean, you have your desires in there. We hear that very clearly. All we're asking for is to allow for the consideration of changing this into residential property. I think my clients heard very clearly your thoughts concerning rental properties. Everybody's voice is the same.
Much rather see ownership.
And that's something that we will need to pursue. But what we're asking for this evening, we're asking for the opportunity to start that process and to begin that pursuit. And for the town to finally take this property off of the dead letter section of the books and put it into a viable property to tie in very well with the park. It's a lot less intensive for municipal services. It's a lot less intensive for cars. It's just a really good fit for that property. It's really the only fit for that property. When we talk about rehabilitation, we talk about bringing vacant buildings back to life, which is exactly what we're doing here now. This would be a really good fit.
The existing building, I know you're very limited on what you can do with that. It's already existing. That has, unless I read it wrong, that has an interior garage, an indoor garage? And it didn't appear that on the 200 Inter Park that you would have indoor parking?
You would. They were designed the same way originally. So there's subterranean parking laid out for both buildings. It exists here and the foundation for it exists in the second building.
Okay, okay.
That also allows, by the way, to have amenities down there. There'd be a fitness room. There's also common areas with video projectors and all that stuff that you would see in a high-end multifamily dwelling.
I just have one more concern. If we approve the recommendation to go to the planning board, and I could probably go that way because we'll get more of the questions answered at that point in time. And then if we don't like it, we still don't have to make the zone change later when it comes back here. Okay, understood. As I recall, the planning board cannot require you to either rent or have condos.
That's correct.
As I recall, once we approve it, then you make, then the businessman makes a decision on where he's going to make the most money and it's out of our control. Is that true?
Legally, that's correct. The way that you can better ensure that the product would be more of a for-sale product as opposed to a rental is by going the area in need of rehabilitation route. Because that enables you to enact a redevelopment plan. And unlike a zoning ordinance, which is broad in nature, redevelopment plan allows you to be very, very specific. Even getting into the fixtures, the finishes, et cetera, so you can require, you know, the materials, the countertops, et cetera, to be much more upgraded of the type that would be more commonly used for a for-sale product as opposed to a rental. Moreover, we mentioned, Joe mentioned that there are going to be pools, so there will be amenities, which you can require to be done in a certain way that would be much more conducive to ownership as opposed to rental. So there are things that you can do in the design and in the planning process that would make the project much more conducive to homeownership condo as opposed to rental.
Okay, hit to that very long answer, okay?
I pause.
I'm trying to figure out now if that answered my question. I think you did. What you're saying is if we, if it's a rehabilitation project, we have more say in whether it's rental or condo.
Well, legally, you're correct. You can't dictate. But through the redevelopment, if you use a redevelopment plan, redevelopment plan allows you to get much more into the details, much more specific about what the project would be. So you could require things that are, you know, more conducive to homeownership. And I gave you some examples in terms of upgraded, you know, granite countertops as opposed to, you know, Home Depot laminate or whatever. Thank you very much. You know, so there, through the redevelopment plan, you can, you can make the project, you know, be much more of a homeownership project. Because the developer would have to expend so much money on developing the plan that they couldn't charge a high enough rent. They would effectively, they'd have to sell the units.
But we still wouldn't have a final.
But you don't have a final say legally to say that this must be a rental or this must be a condo.
But I would agree.
But you increase the likelihood through the redevelopment plan process that you would make it in the interest of the developer to condo and sell the units as opposed to rent them.
Okay. But conversely, for the past ten years, the word redevelopment has been thrown around and I never really see it taking place. If there's any property in this town that there can be a better use of redevelopment, I can't think of anything. Because like I said, this is probably the biggest failure in Parsippany. So something, something does have to be done.
Yeah, I think we all agree with you, Jonathan, that the property, we need to do something with the property or approve something with the property. I agree with that a hundred percent. I support that. My only concern is rental versus condo.
And if I can add, I'm not sure, John, I have a concern with two hundred and eighty-seven and seven acres.
Yeah, well, the density will be worked out at the planning board level, okay? If we approve this rehabilitation concept, okay, it goes to the planning board. All the kinds of questions we're really asking here will really be asked and answered at the planning board level, which you're all welcome to attend.
But we get to ask questions now, so I'm just trying to take use of that.
I understand, I understand.
Take advantage of that this time. Another question with the lumberyard, I know you're putting that in the plans for redevelopment. Is this property for sale? Do you have any ownership rights to the lumberyard?
Absolutely not. This is done with the knowledge and cooperation of the Serbos, but the yard is not for sale. It's not on the market. It's still a going concern as a lumberyard and it's their plans to keep it that way. This is planning for the future because it really is, because of its location, a very unified property with the rest of the development. And again, this flexibility of declaring that whole area in need of rehabilitation allows the town to control what happens down there in the future, not just in the immediate couple of years, but really going forward. And it's quite a bit of control that's given to the municipality in that regard.
I'm not sure if you know, Mr. Serbo's property, how big is it? Do you know?
Kathy should know.
It's on here.
It's three-ish acres, that's correct.
Thank you.
Three, three-ish acres, between three and four. But it's also, as I pointed out before.
Three point nine-nine acres.
It is heavily affected also by the wetland situation. It's running all through the park. So that's always going to be a controlling factor. It's going to be subject to the same buffer requirements, which of course have increased recently. For that, while you have almost four acres, you really don't have that for redevelopment of any kind.
Okay.
The lumberyard's, of course, grandfathered in.
Just one more question. I'm trying to help you out here. Could you just discuss the adjoining properties that aren't on your rendering? Tell me about, are they office space, residential?
Well, actually, there's no commercial uses but the Blackthorn Restaurant and the lumberyard right now. Everything is residential or residential in nature. You have churches going in this direction. Back over here is another residential neighborhood. So it's all residential property, all the way down. The next commercial property is across from the church, which is, you begin with a series of strip malls. But that's quite a distance away. This is all, you have some historical structures which have already been preserved by the various boards and applications. You have a historical cemetery across the way. So really, the residential use is really more in keeping with what's been going on here. And of course, the reservoir is up here with what's going on there. Not a lot of commercial uses. Across the street begins more commercial uses. You have a series of gas stations leading into Waterview, the Waterview Building there. But this area here, immediately affected by this, is all residential in nature. You could certainly, the planning board could find that they want to connect all the residential properties together for better access to the park. And that could certainly be accomplished with the uniform and unified residential approach that you're taking through here.
Okay, thank you. So you're asking us to make a recommendation to the planning board that this property is in need of redevelopment?
No, yes?
No, no, no.
No.
No, 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 no. I think it'd be a recommendation to send it to the planning board.
As a potential rehabilitation project.
Yeah, you can do that. And you can ask the, you can make a recommendation that the planning board study the area to determine whether or not it should be declared in need of rehabilitation, not redevelopment, rehabilitation. And to, also to consider, you know, the concept and the plan that's being proposed.
And Mr. Nelson, in need of rehabilitation, that designation, I know we've done this before, that is not a trendsetter, am I correct, or it doesn't set a precedence if you have a need of rehabilitation?
Well, no, I mean, in terms of, I mean, one of the concerns that typically comes out when you see a redevelopment site like this where you have a large office building that you may convert to residential, you would naturally expect the density to be much higher than it would be if you were dealing with a vacant piece of land and you were going to build. If you just change the zone, sometimes there's a concern that you're going to quote-unquote infect your other zones by setting a precedent. Somebody says, well, you get the density here, you have to then do it there. If you utilize a redevelopment process, then you're, as the mayor suggests, you are protecting yourself against other property owners coming in and saying that, well, you zoned for them a density, a very high density of forty per acre, so we need it here. Also, when you write the zone, zones don't apply to just one particular piece of property. They apply to an area. So you would be changing the legal rights of property owners, not only on this lot, but other lots as well. The redevelopment process enables you to isolate this density, if you want to go that route, to just this particular lot without creating a legal precedent that others could use to require more density. And again, it's just on this lot. It's not in all the other lots in the zone. The difference between rehabilitation and redevelopment area is that redevelopment, rehabilitation simply is a precursor to enable you to enact a redevelopment plan, which would get to the kind of specificity that I alluded to earlier. Redevelopment is a whole different designation. Redevelopment means that there's possible eminent domain, means there's possible payment in lieu of taxes and other tools that are not apparently contemplated with this project. So I don't think that the area in need of redevelopment designation is something that is necessary. But in order to get a redevelopment plan, you need an area in need of rehabilitation designation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to send the recommended site to the planning board as a potential in need of rehabilitation site.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Nelson.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening. Happy New Year.
Okay, ordinances, second read in public hearing. Set for next meeting? Nancy, everything set for?
Yes.
Okay, status of adopted ordinances, 2012 column forty-six and 2012 column forty-eight. Fault adopted on 12/18/12, effective date 1/9/2013. 2012 column forty-seven has been removed. Discussions reminder, scheduled meeting, January 15, 2013, 7:30 p.m., regular meeting, public invited, public participation. February 5, 2013, 7:30 p.m., agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, October 16, 2012, regular meeting. Administration?
I have something.
Oh, Mayor, okay.
I want to, I need to appoint Terrence Whalen as a tax collector with the council's confirmation.
Terrence, who's he?
Terrence Whalen, he's our tax collector. And as of tonight, I was told I had to appoint him as a tax collector.
Okay, and he's been there?
Oh, yeah, he's, since what, 2008? 99 point?
Is this a promotion?
No, this is just to be appointed.
It would be his tenure appointment.
What's his last name?
Whalen, W-H-A-L-E-N.
Entertained a motion to appoint Terrence Whalen?
I have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Does this come with a raise again?
No.
Again?
No, I'm just saying.
Did they get one before?
I don't know.
Because I don't know about it.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Administration, anything?
No.
Okay.
Let me, Yancy, the ordinances that are listed on page three, what are they? They don't have numbers yet, right? Are they for introduction? They'll have numbers for the regular meeting. Next one.
Okay, all ordinances and resolutions are all set for next meeting, regular meeting?
Well, just refresh my memory, this first bullet item, general rules of procedure, what was that?
Oh, yeah, that was, this comes under the guise of cleanup. You can, you may recall that we've had the departure of a couple of council presidents, and there was always an issue as to whether or not the appointment was just for the remainder of the year or the remainder of the term. So what we did was we codified past practice and now put it into the ordinance, so there's an answer to that question going forward.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
The other one is the stacking ordinance that we met on several times as a committee.
Okay.
Yeah, and the third one is the salary range for our treasurer.
Yep. Okay, we have the township office report, engineer report, 2013, Mr. Karifi.
Engineering report, January 2013. Right-of-way use agreement for the Cross River Fiber LLC. Cross River Fiber LLC is seeking to install fiber optic cable within the right-of-ways of the township of Precipiny for the purpose of operating and/or maintaining a telecommunications system. Right-of-way use agreement is necessary to allow Cross River Fiber LLC to use the public right-of-ways for this purpose. We have reviewed the agreement and have no objection to executing same. Resolution must be adopted by the township council.
Okay, you can set the resolution for next meeting.
I have a question on that before we move past it. Are they going to be hanging fiber on existing telephone poles? Are they going to erect their own? What are they doing? Are they going to dig up our streets?
It says on existing utility poles or in underground conduit.
So it's either or.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a timeframe in there? They're going to dig up our streets, I want to know how long they're going to, we're going to have this.
It's next week.
I, no, you can't answer this now, I know, but I'm willing to approve this, but I'd like some answers, you know, to come back to the council. Where are they, where are they running this fiber or where are they digging up this street and how long is it going to take? Things that I'd like to know. What streets are involved?
Where do you live?
Are we okay table on this till we get answers?
We don't need to table, we can approve, it's going to, you know, we really can't say no, I don't think. But I still would like some answers, so if the residents start asking us questions, we can answer them intelligently.
Okay, you'll have a resolution for next meeting, okay?
No passing zones on Route 53. The NJDOT investigated and recommends revising the centerline pavement markings on Route 53 to a no-passing zone from the entire lane to the roadway in Precipiny Troy Hills. This office has no objection to the recommendation.
Actually, I think it's a good idea. You can't pass on that road, it's dangerous.
Yeah.
Okay, resolution set for next meeting?
Okay, I just, Mr. Council President, I just have one more question on the resolutions.
Okay.
With the reappointments that will be coming down next week, Jasmine, I appreciate your email earlier today about the township prosecutor, but is it the administration's position that they want to just keep one township prosecutor?
No, it's not the administration's. It was my prerogative to hold over the prosecutor.
Okay.
I have a question on the auditor, why didn't we approve that tonight?
You know, something that was missed, it was missed.
Can I make the recommendation now?
Yep.
I recommend that our auditor remain Joseph Facone from Samuel Klein and Company.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Karifi, roll call.
Wait, hold on, would that be on, would that be on the resolution for next week then? Along with all the other appointments?
It's actually an appointment.
Okay, okay, okay.
To council party.
This is, this is an appointment that the council makes.
Okay.
We still have to authorize the agreement, but that's no big deal.
Yeah, well, you probably still have to advertise, right, for?
We don't have to, we would do it as a non-fair and open, non-fair and closed. And, but you would have to authorize the actual agreement.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. All others listed on the engineer report are no change. Applications, 2013 license renewal, par three. Application new limousine company, American Elite Limousine Taxi LLC, 1259 Route 46, Route 260, Precipiny, New Jersey, 0705 forward. At this time, I'll entertain a motion, open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, at this time, you'll be given five minutes of speaker.
Hello, hi, my name's James Wargo, I live at 45 Robin Hood Road. I'm having some trouble with a commercial project behind my home, a two-gate hole. I was just looking for some help from the council with what can be done to, I guess, help us with our quality of life and things that have been going on that I don't think the planning board approved. And I've been in contact with different people since September and haven't really gotten a lot of results. I don't know if you have any questions or if you may offer any more details.
As I recall in your email, you were concerned about some additional trees that were cut down. You were at the meetings, the planning board meetings, weren't you?
I've been to quite a few different things, talked to different people at different times, that's correct.
Well, the application came before us, I believe I saw you in the audience.
That was, unfortunately, I didn't make the first meeting in November of 2011. I did make the file meeting in July of 2012 because I wanted to change a fence height.
We had a strict, our township forester approved a certain number of trees to be cut down and no more.
Well, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but he really didn't get any, he got involved after the fact, when I, I believe I involved him. A lot of things went the wrong direction. I could elaborate if you'd like, or, my issue is, I see Route 10.
Why don't you elaborate? Because the administration can kick this back to our township engineer or a forester or?
Well, just before I go any further, in case it doesn't come out right, the forester's been great. James Walsh has done a great job. He was very responsive. So just for the record, I don't even understand how this whole process works, and I've been trying to figure this out since July. I really didn't want to get into town law or anything like this, but I've spent a lot of time researching and finding out what's been going on. Basically, I was at that one meeting where the fence height was up for a change, so I had to go for variance. Asked a few questions, got the impression that not a big deal, nothing's going to be touched as far as been the buffer. I was awakened one August morning at 6:00 in the morning with tree branches breaking and watching trees being destroyed in the buffer area. Called Ed Snikus because he met me on the site, got no return call, called the forester, actually went to his office that afternoon. He went with Ed Snikus the following Monday, wrote the appropriate memos, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's the first time the forester was involved in that project, even though the planning board required that he be involved and sign off on and approve plans.
As I recall, the forester recommended, and it's memorialized in our approval, that they improve the buffer with evergreens, and they can't do it in the winter.
Well, a lot of the reports are referring to looking at Gate Hole Drive. That was, when I was at that one meeting, it was kind of, I even brought that up, that basically was referring to Gate Hole Drive and nothing to do with that buffer that, between the ROL and my house. But since they weren't going to touch it, it's kind of like, what a discussion, because if I'm not going to touch it, why do I have to improve it? But then they, you know, 19 trees disappeared.
Thank you.
Oops, sorry. James Walsh did his job, wrote the memos, they planted trees that are six and a half, seven feet tall. That's almost like a point that, you know, it's just information for you, but another interesting point is this whole thing was discussed with these structures being a maximum of 20 feet. As of now, the ones behind my house are at 24 feet. So again, there's been a lot of misinformation that was given and decided upon that wasn't done. Or just like, you know, you hear the discussion that they can do whatever they want after the fact. We're kind of in that situation now. I can see Route 10 now, I could never see Route 10 before. I can hear Route 10, I mean, just everything has changed. The other major issue which I brought to Mr. Liza's attention in September was that the lights they're putting in are shining into our, into our house, you can see at night, to the point I don't need nightlights in the house anymore, I can just, you know, it's like a full moon, basically.
Horn doors been left open, the horses escaped. At this point in time, what can the planning board or what can the administration do to ease or help the situation?
I don't know.
One of the things.
That's why I'm here.
That's a good question, Councilman.
I mean, I'm almost gotten to the response that not much, but.
Well, first, we'd have to get recommendations from our engineer and as well as our forestry director on what we can do and what we can't do. Then, of course, I'd have to contact the township attorney to see what we can and can't do. If they didn't follow, like, listen, if you're telling me their structure's 24 feet, approve for 20, well, now they're in violation. I mean, you can't build higher if you're approved for something less. So that's one thing we'd have to look at right away, because if they do build higher, why would they build higher? If they, you know, so we need to find that out. What I could do, Mr. Wargo, is I can, it would probably be a lot easier just to have myself, you, engineer, Mr. Liza, and Mr. Walsh in my office, and we could discuss the perimeters which we can go forward with. The trees are gone, like Councilman DiPiero said.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to make that a, I just brought that up because that's part of the history. And I believe Mr. Walsh did everything he could in his power at that moment. Anything extra would be additional too.
My concern is if you're absolutely correct, that they built higher than permitted, I have a problem with that as well, so.
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Karifi, I went first before, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I happen to live over there. I walked down to your house and looked through. I mean, I know they took down a lot of trees behind my house, and I can see clearly through there.
They weren't supposed to, just so you know.
No, I know, and your house.
I mean, they decimated it.
They just decimated it. I mean, they just, and the thing is, they took down, I can't see that it could have been approved for the amount of trees that they took down, but they've taken down 40, 50-foot trees, and now if they're going to replace them with trees that are six, seven feet high, how long is it going to take before those trees start to grow and block these lights that clearly shine in the back of everyone's house? You know, it's, you can look at it, and it's going to be years before these trees that they're going to replace, the ones they took down, with grow and block.
I mean, this is, this structure picture right now is not behind my house. This is about 400 feet away. The issue, well, I brought this up in September to Mr. Liza, is I knew the structure was going to be right behind my home, you know, 10 feet from the typical 150-foot buffer line, which has now been erected, and that's now, you know, and that's why now that's new information of it being 24 feet, because it's fairly new, it's within the last four weeks.
And that's what it's going to look like when you're done.
Well, that's what, I actually had some discussions with the contractor, because I didn't want to misspeak and like, oh, no, it's not going to be like that. And he told me it is going to be the same. So it's not, I'm not misspeaking, I looked at the lighting plans, I looked at, I even think the lighting intensity is greater than the plans, because I got, you know, the lux lighting or the candle foot lighting, and, you know, numbers were much lower than some measurements that I was able to get.
Mr. Wargo, I don't mean to stop you, I'm sorry, your five minutes have been up for a while.
I mean, just a final, yeah, a final note on that, just so everyone's aware. Usually a project of this size has a lot of money in escrow or in a bond, there is not that money. It's only 65,000 that's in a check form. This has got to be a $7 million project, so there isn't that money after the fact to make anyone do anything. It would turn into a legal battle, I don't want that to happen, where then it just turns into a taxpayer burden. So that's why I've been trying to let people know and get it taken care of. And this is all for a tenant, it's not even for the building owner.
Thank you.
They are building it, they're still building that one section.
They're still in process, right.
And they're not allowed to build 20 feet, then.
Well, they're 24.
Something's going to need to be done to stop it now, while it's still in progress.
We're going to have a discussion, but thank you. I have a question. Did we give permission for these people to cut these trees or they just cut them? I'm just asking.
They get approval from the planning board.
So they got approval to cut all those trees?
They don't get, they get approval to, go ahead, Mike, because you were at that meeting, but they get approval from the project, whatever application they forward to the planning board, and then from there, the trees cut down, they have to get approval from, I would imagine, the township engineering department and.
Well, no, my question was, all the trees they cut down, they got approved for, that's all I was asking.
I don't, I don't know which trees were cut down. When the presentation is made to the planning board, they propose which trees have to come down and what they're going to do to mitigate the site pollution afterwards.
Right.
Okay? So that's all memorialized in the planning board minutes. There's a CD you can obtain and listen to it. What we have, what the mayor's going to be checking now is to see if they've cut down more trees than they had.
Right, that was my question.
Well, your question was, did they cut down more? We don't know that.
Right, and what.
At this point, we don't know that.
And what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have my, we'll have Mr. Liza, Mr. Walsh, we might as well have everybody in the room that would be, and I would have to ask questions anyway, Jennifer Collins, who's planning, zoning, construction, and Ed Snikus. And I'll contact you, Mr. Wargo, on a date that's good for you, so we can have that meeting here in my council chamber.
Can I make a suggestion, Mayor? Since Councilman Karifi is also a resident in that area, and why don't you have a council also represented at that meeting?
That's fine.
I would suggest Paul, since he lives there and he's familiar with the issue.
Yes.
Sure.
Definitely.
I was at the meeting that you were asking questions, and I remember sitting in the audience and thinking that you pretty much asked every single question I could have ever imagined. And it's ironic that you're here this evening, because this whole week, when I drive by that project every day, I keep wondering when they're going to be finished. And I just found out about two days ago that that's the way it is. It is an embarrassment what an eyesore that has turned out to be. It looks like an unfinished work project.
We're going to get that at the township library, too.
Yeah.